So anyway, I'm Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Scott Kinter?
He's not here.
Okay. Steve Mangio?
Yes.
And Mary Stone will not be with us tonight. In Town Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner?
Yes.
And we have for anticipated speakers or presenters on the agenda, please respond when your name is called. Everett Chandler from Winter GEC?
Yes.
Thank you. William Heaney, Heaney and Associates?
Yes, sir, I'm present.
Michael DeSantos, Crane Properties?
Mike will be joining in. He's rushing back from a meeting and he'll jump in on his phone.
Okay, thanks. And Steve Sawyer from GM2 Inc. I don't see Steve just yet.
Yeah, he'll be here around 7:30, sorry.
Okay, thanks, Martha. So this May 1st, 2024, Open Meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid fashion to allow for attendance, both remotely and in person, consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, which extends the Governor's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location, and allows public bodies to meet entirely or partially remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening as a hybrid meeting, both in person, in the second-floor hearing room at 12 Kentway Byfield Mass, and by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us via Zoom by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID number 83271413056, passcode 108790, excuse me, or by calling 1-929-2056099. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating either in person or by video, indoor telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable, Channel 9, and at www.tncTV.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen if they are participating remotely. Please state your intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, excuse me, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees participating via Zoom, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button, or on your phone, hit star six to toggle mute or unmute when you're not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you, and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. There will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. For those participating via Zoom, I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. For those participating in person, please raise your hand to request to speak. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands. If via Zoom, they will be acknowledged in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the participant applicant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column, and again, afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record, and again, the participant applicant or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. This, oh, sorry. Finally, please note that each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Now, we've been turning to the agenda. The next item on the agenda is an A&R submission for proposed lot line change between 53 Larkin Road map, R19 Lot 70, and 55 Larkin Road map, R19 Lot 1. The owner applicant of 53 Larkin Road is Alan P. Rogers Jr. and Nancy J. Rogers. The owner of 55 Larkin Road is the Larkin Road Realty Trust, Alan P. Rogers Jr., trustee. And we have Mr. Chandler from Winter GSC here to present the plan, so if you would, go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'll share my screen. Everyone see that? All right.
Yes, I can.
Okay. All right. My name is Everett Chandler. I am the owner of Winter GEC, a local land surveying company, Autistic Report, and I am here tonight for Alan Rogers. Alan Rogers has, his family has been in Newbury since the mid-1600s. 14 generations, he tells me. And this is a piece of land where he has lived for some time, and he, at some point in the recent past, added on to the house so that he can share the space with his daughter. And we're just adjusting the lot lines to accommodate the addition and keep the separate ownership of the abutting parcel in the trust. And that's pretty much what we're doing here tonight. Pretty straightforward, this one.
Okay. Can you point out exactly which lines are being relocated?
Yep. So this line here, this triangular piece, is being added to 53 Larkin here, taken from 55 Larkin. And then over on the far side of the building, Alan wanted to add this larger piece over here, where they have some place structures and whatnot for his daughter's children. You can see on the inset over here as well, you can see parcel one, the triangular piece here that we're talking about, and parcel two, which is a more rectangular shaped piece, being added to the center parcel, which is 53 Larkin.
Could you show the remainder of the parcel of 55, please?
Yep. So the remainder of 55 Larkin is a larger parcel that extends around the corner. This was taken when 95 was built, and it used to be Shoot Road that came across, and now is Larkin Road as it goes into Georgetown. So the parcel does extend. It's still over nine acres in lot area. And does have frontage on both sides of Larkin Road. Kind of an odd little corner there.
Okay, so with the parcel two on your plan, that is being... What's the street number of that one currently?
It is actually part of 5055. 55 wraps right around 53 right now.
Okay.
So both parcels are being cut out of 55 and added to 53.
Maybe Everett, you could show that line that separates.
I'm sorry, Martha, I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Maybe you can show the line that separates this from the remainder of 55 right at the top of.
This line here, this 7255, that is the proposed new lot line. This over here being 55, and this over here is now going to be part of 53. I could actually highlight on here, I think, if that would be easier to see. So that will be the new line between... This is, this being the remainder of 55, and this is the parcel that's being cut off to the right of 50 and added to 53. And this is the, again, the line here.
Okay, so what is the frontage for 55 now?
55? 55 has 263 feet of frontage here on this piece of Larkin, in addition to the larger frontage over on the other side of Larkin.
Let's see. Thank you. Martha, before I turn to the board members, anything you'd like to add?
No. Everett has gone through two rounds of revisions on this and addressed all the questions and comments that we had.
Martha, I'm having a little trouble hearing you. Can you maybe pull the microphone closer to you?
I'll try. Is that any better?
It is, yeah.
Yes, much better.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. It's not the best setup in here for doing this. Anyway, I'm saying Everett has gone through two rounds of revisions on this and clarified some of the comments and questions that we had. So I think it seems pretty straightforward.
Okay. Pete, any questions, comments?
No questions. Thanks, sorry.
Woody?
No questions or comments. The explanation was great. Thank you.
Okay, Steve, anything?
Thank you. No questions.
All right, nor do I. Well, if everything seems to be in order, would anyone care to move to endorse the A&R plan showing the proposed lot line changes between 53 Larkin Road and 55 Larkin Road?
So moved.
And you have a second.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that's, I think, are all the voting members we have present, but you've got a quorum anyway, and a unanimous vote. Okay, I think you're all set.
I'm sorry. Who moved and seconded?
I'm sorry?
Who moved and seconded the motion?
Woody moved and Pete seconded.
Thank you.
Three affirmative votes, Pete, Woody, myself.
Thank you.
Okay.
Excellent.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Next item on the agenda is the April financial report. And as well with that, get it out of the way. The payroll and invoices authorized for April of 2024 were payroll warrants for the Planning Director and Assistant Planner, PR 24-21 for the pay period ending April 6, 2024, and PR 24-22 for the pay period ending 4/2024. And Planning Board expenses, the Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad for 2324. So that is our financial report for April. Next item on the agenda is 68 Green Street, Farmview Lane, Michael DeSantis, Crane Properties. This is a request for release of the Performance Covenant. I'm sorry, request for lease of Lot 2 from the Performance Covenant, and request for full release of the Performance Covenant for Farmview Lane subdivision, also known as 68 Green Street subdivision, and request for approval of the Performance Bond. The last time we met on this, we deferred action until tonight and scheduled a sit walk, which was held on April 26. Our engineer, Joe Suetka, has advised that the proposed $30,000 bond, $30,000 bond, is, in his opinion, sufficient to cover the remaining work. Let me turn to the applicant and ask Attorney Heaney, can you give us an update?
Yes, certainly. I'd be happy to. First of all, my name is Bill Heaney. My office is in Beverly on 86 Dodge Street. I represent Crane Properties LLC. Mike DeSantos is the principal. Mike's trying to jump in on the phone, so at some point, he's going to join in the call and will be available to answer any of your questions. This is a definitive subdivision plan that Mike purchased it, so he took it along with all the history. It's a three-lot subdivision off of Green Street called Farmview Lane. And in March of 2023, we got a release from you for Lot 3, sold Lot 3. In November of 2023, we got a release for Lot 1, sold Lot 1. We are nearing the end of the project here, in the very last steps. We have Lot Number 2 under agreement. The house is finished. The buyers are waiting to purchase. And over the last month, we've been working with Martha and your board to tidy up and meet the final requirements of your Performance Covenants. And when we met out there on April 17, there was a number of smaller items that needed to be completed. And I say smaller, because if you look at the grand scheme of this project, $30,000 is a relatively small amount with the 10% buffer. Since that time, and we were back out there on Friday, I believe on Friday, we had Pete out there, Woody showed up, and I was very impressed with his mode of transportation. I believe Mary was there, Stephen was there, and Martha was there. We walked the site. At that site visit, we got to see that most of the items from our April 17 meeting were substantially completed. There were a few loose ends that just really were weather-dependent, in time-dependent. Like, for example, when we were out there last Friday, the final top coat hadn't been put on the lot and raked out, and then with the hydro seed. If you go out there now, you'll see all the hydro seeding is done, leaving very, very little. And on April 17, another big item was some araviti trees that were planted. So from April 17 to now, pretty much everything's been completed by McCarthy Landscaping. I think the only thing left for them is the final grade on the entire road, which is their last item to do as they're leaving. There shouldn't be a whole lot of heavy equipment traveling in there now, so they can do the final grade and top coat on the road. And then we have the aspilts that need to be done by Millennial. So as we've checked many of those items off the list, I think, I know, when we were here, two weeks ago, we were requesting a $30,000 bond, but I think we would like to request that perhaps maybe a cash deposit be put up now for a lesser amount, since there's really such limited options or limited items that are still on the punch list. And those items would be the final grade on the road, and then the aspilts from Millennial. The estimate for the aspilts was five grand before. And that should be in line with what we're going to have to pay here to finish out this project. So before you tonight is our request from April 17 to release Lot Number 1, so that we can sell Lot Number 1. Is it 1? No, sorry, Lot Number 2. I get them all confused on this one. So Lot Number 2 would be released so that we could have the sale here next week, and then an overall release of the Performance Covenants with either a cash payment to be held or the $30,000 bond. But at this point, we think the $30,000 bond might be a little bit overkill. I will turn that over to the board members that were actually at our site visit on Friday, and they can discuss if they think there's any other outstanding items.
So what amount are you suggesting then?
We would like to suggest that the amount that we would put up for a cash bond would be the $5,000 for Millennial, plus the 10% extra cushion that Joe was suggesting. I guess there's a 10% cushion that you guys typically work with. McCarthy, the landscaper, is substantially complete, and Mike is going to finish that top coat with him, and McCarthy's going to be paid by Mike.
Okay, I think the last thing we have from Joe Suetka was the recommendation of $30,000.
Martha? That's correct. In all fairness, that was in April, when we were trying to get it done for April 17. Since that time, you know, some of it was actually just supply and demand, like the aravities weren't in stock, so the aravities are in now. You know, the hydro seeding's been able to be done. Weather kind of opened. We've had a big change in weather, so they've been able to get some of this work done that they weren't able to get done before April 17. And I know you didn't have the benefit of being there, so I think we can turn it over to maybe Pete and Woody and Stephen and Martha, who actually got to see the site.
Well, I've driven by the site since then. And I guess the thing I'm wrestling with is, you may, everything you say, I give you the benefit of the doubt, but we don't have anything from Joe Suetka as to what he feels is the appropriate amount. And Martha, do you have anything further to add to this?
No, I don't. I mean, I know a lot of work has been done, but as you said, we don't have any... The request hasn't been made to Joe to look at a revised number for this. I know he was out there this morning, and there was still a ponding issue in the driveway for Lot 2, which I understand from Mike was going to be taken care of. So, you know, we don't really have any other input at this point.
Correct. And in all fairness to the board, we did not amend our request from April 17, so it's more of a request that we're making tonight. So I apologize if I'm springing that on you.
Pete, you look like you have something to say.
No, no, no. I was just going to say, you know, Bill, so since there wasn't a request, and it's kind of being asked now, I might lean towards leaving what was in place in place, and I think it probably can be settled down very quickly if you're comfortable with that and if Mike's comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think, Mike, you know, and we're willing to stick with our original request of April 17. We were in hopes of reducing it so that we could avoid the bond and do the cash. But, you know, the bond, it can be finished out real quick and turned over, so the harm is not that great of a harm.
Okay, great. Then I appreciate your cooperation with that. That's helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, it's just a little awkward for the board to settle on a separate amount when our consultant hasn't seen it. Woody, anything you'd like to add?
No, it's already been said. I agree. I respect Joe Suetka's opinion in consultation, and unfortunately, we should stick to the April 17 request.
Okay, Steve, anything to add?
No, I do not. No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. So, given that I think we're stuck for the time being, at least with the $30,000, would you want to do that by bond or cash or?
The plan would be for a bond.
Okay. And so what we need to do is, I'm just trying to think out loud here. So we need a motion second and a vote to approve the form and amount of security to be held in lieu of Performance Bond. So Martha, before I ask for a motion, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I think that's it. Just a reminder that the board will need to have that in hand before actually releasing
the documents. All right, so help me if I get this right. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
If I may, Mr. Chair, it's a two-part request. It's one to release Lot Number 2. I'm going to give my lot right here. Releasing Lot Number 2 would allow the sale of Lot Number 2, and then the second part is the releasing the Performance Covenant Bond, releasing the Performance Covenant with the bond.
Yeah, no, I understand that, and I'm going to get to that. So right now, I think we need a motion to approve a $30,000 bond as security to be held in lieu of the Performance Covenant. I'm sorry. Anyone care to make such a motion?
Sure thing, Larry.
Thank you, Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So secondly, I think we need a motion to release Lot 2 in the Performance Covenant, contingent on submission of a bond with the town, an amount of $30,000 for security. Do I have a motion?
You have it.
Thank you, Pete. Do I have a second, Woody?
Second.
Any discussion? Then hearing none. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Lastly, I believe we need a motion and vote to authorize the Chair to sign the Form E release of the Performance Covenant in agreement. Just as a I'll point out, I'm looking at a draft of the release of Performance Covenant, and there are a number of typos. Does anyone address that, Martha?
I was in touch with Nicole today. I sent her a redline version of that. So we should be getting a clean version back. We don't have one that's ready to sign right now.
Okay. But are we ready to go forward with the motion?
Yes, the typos were, you know, basically like Scrivener's errors.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Therefore, would anyone care to, once again, to vote to authorize me as Chair to sign the Form E in the release of Performance Covenant in agreement?
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Thank you, Pete. Any discussion? All right, then Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So Martha and Bill, have I covered all the bases here?
Yes, I believe you have, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I believe so. I'm sorry. So Bill, do you know if Nicole's going to be able to get that? I would have done it, but it was the...
Yeah, no, well, it'll be done first thing tomorrow morning. That's not going to be a problem. I was out, I just got back to the office now, so I didn't even know that you guys had swapped versions, but first thing tomorrow morning, you'll have it.
Okay, and I will actually not be in the office tomorrow, so if Nicole can send that to Kristen?
Sure.
When is the closing scheduled for?
It's next week, so we have a little bit of time on that.
Okay.
I'm not doing that closing. I'm not a part of that transaction, but I believe it is next week.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. I think we're all set on this item. So continuing on the agenda to new business, we have 105 High Road Seagate. Steve Sawyer is here. Steve, you're with us, let's see.
Yeah, I made it.
So Steve, can you give us a project status report?
Yeah, so currently, so actually, they are looking, let's see, I just spoke with Maggie today. So final landscaping, they're projected now for the end of July, for the final landscaping to be completed. Final paving by the end of August. Currently, they do have the bridges complete and the trail cleared out in the rear for that pathway. And open space parking in the rear pasture area, they're projected the end of July, so they'll be dismantling or moving or whatever their temporary office they have set up. So we're going to see a lot of progress as far as that rear open space over the next three months. So we'll look to see that completed by the beginning of August, which is good news. All the building, you know, so the final building was in Lot 9, is framed and under construction. And what we're looking at now is the landscaper came in with a planting plan that was submitted to a fairly robust plan around that whole corner area. And another actually excellent update that occurred was the neighbor up above Unit 9, they ended up replacing that fence on their own, that section of fence, and they moved it back to the property line. So that mitigates that sort of no man's land where... Um, so that mitigates that sort of no man's land where, you know, any future. Um, consideration for the easement that uh, that Pete had mentioned that just to avoid any conflict. So. Good news is, okay, the the simplest way, the best way ended up going in that manner where the fence was moved to the property line. Which in turn gives more room for planting in that area. Um, one update that happened, they, when in the tree clearing, so around the Colby side, there was some dead trees they took out. They took those trees. And I guess in one of the windstorms, we had some pretty robust windstorms. Some of those trees were compromised there. Um, and there was one that was partially starting to 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 uproot. Um, and just for necessity, they went in and took took those trees and they wanna replant. There with, um, they're all, you know, very, you know, it's a. Robust plan what they're coming, you know, coming in with. I don't, they didn't call out a caliper. The board can request a caliper. If you want a larger, robust tree, you guys can dictate that. Um, in that, in that corner, uh, but they have red maples and pin oaks, um, all around that whole corner there. They mixed in some evergreen white spruce. That tight area, they're gonna come, the the tight area, they're doing the emerald, emerald and green Aberviti. At that area where there's a pinch point between the wall and the fence, it'll give some green buffer. Um, solid buffer at that tight spot. Um, so that's where we're at, uh. One thing I didn't do that, so, oh, I can, you know what, I'm here, I'm talking about the plan and I never shared it. I'll only share the my screen.
Just about to ask you to do that.
Okay, um. Am I allowed to yet, or?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay, great. Are we there?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, so this was the area I was just rambling on about this back corner area. Um, so they have come up with a a planting plan. I believe they're all native. Native uh, species and it's a mix of hardwoods. So we have. One, two, three, four, five, six red maples and one, two, three, four, five, um, pin oaks back there. Um, along with the mix of the emerald, emerald green in this location and then some white, white spruce, um, mixed in. Mixed between. Um, so that's what they're looking to, the the landscaper is recommended to them to plant, uh. And uh, we're here to present that to you. And then also, this is the, this shows the property line here. Where the fence used to be about eight feet forward at this location. Uh, one thing I haven't done is I haven't updated the site plan, um. With the new, with the actual fence location, the the civil site plan, which probably I should, I should end up doing that sooner than later. Um, and get that into the, into the board. But that's where we're at and uh. Things are, you know, it's hopefully by, you know, hopefully by the end of the summer, we'll have the open space ready for pub- for public access. Um, with the parking ready to go.
Okay. And have you seen, um, did you see Joe Swatkin's, um, May first letter?
Was that the one on the bond reduction?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did see that. Um, so that's the other portion of this. We were asking to, for the bond reduction. So one thing on, let's see, on the, you know, we were asking for, I forget what that amount was. Let's see, it was a hundred and. Was that we're asking it to be reduced to, uh?
One eighty, a hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty is what I have, looking at your. Uh, your, uh, April twenty.
Yeah, back, yeah, so a hundred and eighty-five left. Um, and then I believe, so we had the entry, it it's interesting, we had the entry while he said that there was nothing in there for. The, that wall on unit nine. I don't know if that's because. We weren't, that's sort of one of the exclusive unit areas, and I'm trying to remember if the bond estimate, if we're including work. In the exclusive use areas, where that's associated with one of the unit lots, um, but it is, I I understand it is predicated is to be complete. Um, but it needs to be built in order to to sell and and sell the unit into that unit nine, nine, uh, lot. Uh, so I, you know, I defer to the Borough Board and one thing I believe we have a fair amount on landscaping held. We have on landscaping miscellaneous. As well plans mobilization. Fancy split. Site, road pavement, sidewalk drainage, and I'm not seeing it, open space.
Yeah, I see open space landscaping, but I'm not seeing any.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, I. If if you would like to hold, you know, hold some money for that, um. Um, I I think we'd be okay with it, um, either way, uh. That, you know, right now it's excavated, ready to be installed, um, you know, all, a wall of that nature, it's, it's. You know, they can, they run some money. They do run money, uh. And it'd probably be, you know, it's somewhere in the, I, you know, my guess. Best guess would be, you know, in the thirty to thirty to fifty range, actually, to get that in.
Okay, so I I'm just trying to organize my thoughts on this. Basically, what you need tonight is the approval of the planting plan.
Yep.
Unit nine and uh, a partial release of funds from the tripartite agreement, which.
Yep.
Uh, um, so that would, uh, so that would leave. Uh, secured under the tripartite agreement, that one hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars plus any additional amount we feel might be necessary. Uh, for the landscaping on on unit nine. Is that a fair summary?
That's a, that's a perfect summary, yes.
Okay, uh, Martha, anything before I turn to the board members?
Hmm, uh, no, not really. I guess my only question would be whether the, whether the board would be interested in in taking a sidewalk before actually. Voting on anything.
Okay, uh, well, let's ask Pete, uh.
Uh, yeah, I think a sidewalk would be a great idea, just so everybody can get a feel for what nine looks like, uh, where the wall needs to be built. And then I guess I have a question about the caliper of trees, um. Cause I I'm sure that that's gonna affect the cost and what would be most appropriate, uh, size, uh, considering what came down. And so I. I'm gonna turn to staff and maybe some input for that, just to to guide our conversation a little bit.
Uh, it's not, not something I've really thought about, um. So Kristen, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, not really. I, it looks okay to me. I mean, our variety is really fast growing, um, but. You know.
Yep.
Red maple and pin oak are. You know, are good native. Not really. Pin oak is a native to Byfield, but, um. It's around. I think they're fine.
Yeah, I, from. Yeah, I think the original planning plan, they're calling like three to three and a half inch caliper, which is is a robust tree. I can, you know, that's a fairly sizable. Uh, planted tree. It's definitely not a sprig.
Right, yeah, I I was thinking three to four, but if if we needed something more substantial, maybe up to six, but that could be.
Nah, I would push hard on us. So that's, that's a difficult operation to get those large trees in.
Yeah, I mean, three to four seems to be fairly typical.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, thanks for that. Uh, I lean more towards four, just because I, you know, I think, uh, might be a little bit better survival. But that being said, I think a sidewalk's a great idea, uh, for everybody to see. And did I hear right? Um, hopefully by August, that the the back piece of this will be done with the open space.
Yes.
So Steve, is that, here we go, is that, do you think that's realistic or is it?
I don't know. I hope, I sure hope it is. I know Ben, I think they're getting to a point where the. Wh- wh- what, I think what they're waiting on is to get that last, last house framed and tight. And once that's done, there's really no need for any backup, you know, the staging and all that for the buildings. Now, they're, the only problem, they've gotten very comfortable in that building back there, um, using it as an office.
Yeah.
Um, and. So, you know, I think it's probably, given the way things go there, I would probably say, I probably would be moralistic mid-September that we'll be. Being able to get out there and utilize it. Um, and I'm, I will be pushing Ben. Um, Maggie and Ben said, hey, this has been languishing quite some time and. You you know, basically, they they were saying, well, we do, we need to get nine up. And maybe we'll move our office into that building once it's, we could work out and use that as an office, temporary office until that time. Um, so I'll, I will inform them of that.
Okay, yeah, that'll be helpful. Uh, thanks. That's all I have for now, Larry. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Woody, uh, what what's your feeling about a sidewalk?
Well, a sidewalk I think would be great, cause it sounds like some trees have, were damaged and removed and then what was dead was removed, so. It'd be nice to get some eyes on what that looks like now and along with this landscape plan that would. Get a real feel for it. And then, as far as the fence is concerned in the lot line. That that was replaced on the actual lot line, I think that's great, cause that that uh, was a concern of mine as well and just it's. Good that it's where it's supposed to be. And it does leave space for more, more room for the landscape. And then, if I, this is kind of a question, um. The building that's been used as an office that we saw on our last sidewalk there is basically right about where. The parking's supposed to be for the open space out back, correct?
You are correct.
Okay, so that's, that's kind of the holdup there for the open space. So I guess if that gets resolved and they get. They move along with you with number nine and get things moving, then the sooner, the sooner the better as far as.
Yeah.
Open, you open space, so that sounds great as well. So. To the answer your question, Larry, yes, a sidewalk would be great.
Okay, and Steve Manjoe, any thoughts?
Yes, I agree. Uh, personally, I'm sure I'll find it to be educational to do a sidewalk at this location. And illuminating as well, so I'm all for it.
Okay, thank you. So I guess that's where we're going, um, uh, Martha, do we want to try and schedule something now? Or, um, you want to, um. Talk with Steve further and, uh, see if he can come up with a date. What's your pleasure?
Um, since we're missing two board members tonight, if if we could do it after the meeting and see what might work for everybody.
Okay, yeah.
Um, my, um, it would probably be now that we have like nice late, you know. Would it, would you be pushing for a weekend or would you be looking for an afternoon, midweek?
Say preferably a weekday.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, okay. Like a af- late afternoon or something, okay. My afternoons typically are fairly flexible after, pretty much after three o'clock. So three o'clock on, I'm usually pretty open.
Alright, well, why don't I let you work that out with Martha? She she's gonna wanna uh, reach out to all the members and see who's available.
Okay.
Okay, I don't think, uh, we don't need him, this is not a public hearing, so we don't need a motion to continue. Uh, I guess we'll anticipate getting this on the next agenda, Martha, or?
Uh, yes. Yes.
But, like I said, we don't, we don't need a formal motion because it's not a, um. Not a public hearing. So we'll work that out, Stephen.
Okay, how about, uh, is there any further thought on the, um, would we land on the bond reduction?
I don't think we have, um.
Okay, is that gonna be kind of based on the site? Is it also?
I liked, that that was my anticipation, yeah.
That's, yeah, that sounds great.
I think some additional money, uh, needs to be held back. I don't know that I have a good handle on what that number is right.
Alright. Yeah, there is, yeah, I guess, you know, in the area, and to be honest, there is additional plant, probably additional planting in that corner also that is. Um, of higher value that, uh, than the original budget.
Yeah, did you mention a figure of thirty thousand that I hear?
I I threw out thirty, yeah.
Okay.
I can check with, um, I can check with Ben and see, uh. I know Ben, he, it's his company, um, he's doing the building and he has a, he, they're doing the site work out there also.
Okay.
Okay, so that would, for both the construction of the wall and the plantings.
Yeah.
Uh, may I ask a question, please, Larry?
Of course.
Um, I guess this is directed towards Martha, uh, and you maybe as well, uh. As far as the bond amount and whatnot, is that something Joe is gonna weigh in on again? Will we see a report from him before, uh, our next meeting on this?
Um, we did get a letter, um, from him this afternoon, which I sent out, ma- ma- maybe everybody didn't see it. But he felt that the amount that was requested, um, based on the percent complete, seventy-nine percent was reasonable. But he did, did note that there was nothing, nothing really for the construction of this wall that we're talking about and the planting. So he recommended. You know, either mending the bond to include, to include that or to, um, release less than what was being requested to cover that amount.
Okay, thank you, Martha.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you. I think the other, other outstanding piece really is the conservation restriction, which will need to be. All buttoned up before, uh, occupancy of that final unit. And I know it's been back and forth with, um, DCR and Matt Gaines and. Uh, the final revisions are in in the hands of Town Council right now. They're pretty minor, but. You know, we should be able to get, uh, get feedback soon and keep that moving.
Steve, did the, can you just talk a little bit about the trail and the bridges? Is that, was that permitted through the Conservation Commission? And I apologize, I I don't know.
Yeah, so that, um, it was part of the planning board process and we went back in. We would, we did go to conservation and we, um. There is a order conditions for that, yes.
So have they been out to inspect the work that was done with the bridges?
I, they have not, um, I don't believe they, the, I, they probably would. I don't think it was part of the order for them to inspect it, um, probably with the final, basically, we. Once it's completed, we do an as-built and a suttic, uh, uh, a COC request. Um, and at that point, they may go out and take a walk out there to, you know, with the, on the bridges and the trail. And I imagine once the, the planning board, once that open space is complete. Um, they're, I'm sure they're gonna wanna walk, walk that trail also.
For sure. Are the bridges actually done?
Yes, that's my, I haven't, I know what, I'm gonna, I I was, I've been, I was away this past week. And I think they were just completed in the last week and a half or so, and I haven't been down there, so. Um, I'm gonna go take a walk out there, hopefully, hopefully before we meet on site. I'd like to get out and see, see how they did.
Sounds good.
And I don't know, it's not gonna be, I, you know, I don't know if the board's gonna wanna go try, it's still a mess back there. I, what I'll do is I'll grab some pictures of them, um. And once we get out, you know, it's really not, once we get it all, the that back area smoothed out and cleared out. And see you're not thrashing through any tall grass, although I guess the grass isn't that tall, yeah, but making a more comfortable visit.
Well, that sounds good. I was gonna suggest if you could take some pictures, that'd be super.
I'm, I know some of our earlier sidewalks out there weren't very pleasant.
A little bushwhacking.
Yeah.
A little wet.
Yes.
Hey, um. I guess we can let you go, Steve.
Yeah, great. Alright, thank you, everybody. Uh, and Martha just let me know and I'm, I'm pretty flexible, so look forward to seeing everybody out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, bye.
Okay, moving on, the agenda, our liaison reports to the Select Board, Martha?
Um, Select Board met on, uh, the twenty-third and there really was not very much on the agenda. There were some. Uh, some appointments, uh, to various boards and commissions, including the, um. Uh, the Cultural Council, um, some public use property. Uh, liquor, liquor licenses, but nothing, nothing of substance for the planning board.
Thanks, Martha. Uh, next is ZBA, that's me. Uh, they met on the eighteenth of April. It is, um. Pretty heavy's, uh, agenda. They had, uh, six, actually, six public hearings, four approved. One continued and one withdrawn and, uh, not, none of, no items here that would be of particular interest to the planning board. Um, they did also have an update on the Pearson Drive forty B, but that largely revolved around. A discussion of the regulatory agree- agreement, which is, uh, currently under review by Town Council. That's about all I I have for ZBA. Conservation, Woody?
Um, conservation actually has not met since our last meeting, two weeks ago, so. Um, their next meeting is next Tuesday and I'll have a. Um, their next meeting is next Tuesday and I'll have a report at our next meeting.
Thank you, Woody. Martha, anything from MBPC?
Uh, yes, we had a planners meeting on. Uh. What day was that? Let's see, the commissioners meeting on the eighteen, or the, uh, regional planners meeting on the. Twenty-fifth, the commissioners meeting was relatively general, general business. Uh, the planners meeting on the twenty-fifth, um. They have a, a um, kind of arts and cultural specialist who has joined their staff and is reaching out to. All the, all the communities to see how, how the arts can be incorporated into, into planning and into the communities, and she gave us a presentation. So, a lot of enthusiasm about the potential for, for doing that work.
Good. Thank you, Martha. And that brings us to the planning director's report.
I will admit, after the big push for town meeting last night and all the, all the work going into that with presentation and stuff, I really don't have anything else to. To report on. For tonight.
How about what happened last night? That'd be a great report.
Well, yes, I think most people know, but yes, um, we did have a. A uh, sort of resounding uh, vote in favor of our MBTA. Um, communities, multi-family zoning. Ian did a fabulous presentation. Uh, we had a lot of compliments afterwards from. Uh, many people who were at the meeting as well as uh, from town council, um. Think his presentation was very clear. Um, very much to, to the point, answered a lot of questions, got out ahead of a lot of questions. And uh, the vote was uh, two thirty-four to in favor, uh, eighty against, which was actually seventy-five percent. And we only needed a simple majority, so even if we'd requi- uh, require the usual two-thirds, it would have, would have passed. So, um.
Well, it was a great effort by everyone involved and thank you all. That's terrific.
Yeah, well, thank you, you know, thank you all. I know there are many, many, many presentations on this and lots of interaction with Ian and Kayla and. And uh, you know, just thank you all for your continued engagement and support in this process. I know a lot of people, um, are now very, very, um. Enthusiastic about continuing discussion of housing in Newbury and what, you know, what other efforts can be made to. You know, increase the choice and diversity of, of housing. So, I'm, I'm sure, especially with the, the, um. Housing production plan wrapping up relatively soon, I think that will set a, you know, set out a good framework for the board to have these discussions. Um, Kristen also reached out to Ian. There are some, you know. Grant opportunities to look at some of these things like doing a, you know, a starter home district. Or following through on the discussions that we've had on inclusionary zoning, um. Some communities are, are not as far advanced as we are in terms of accessory dwelling units, but, you know, that's another thing that we've been had. We've had on our radar to see if there are revisions that we can make to that that might. You know, might make it even more appealing to people as an option. So a lot of, a lot of things to talk about going forward. And this is a, this is wonderful first step and it's just really exciting that we got to this point.
It really is. Thank you, everybody for your efforts. Um. Martha, unless you have something, any, anything else to add, I'm just gonna move on, um. And uh, lastly, uh, the minutes from April seventeenth, I think we're just gonna hold those till the next meeting. Okay, I don't, I don't think they've been distributed, have they, Kristen?
No, I completed them today, but it felt too soon to send them out to everybody to have time to review them, so we can do them at the next meeting.
You had a busy time along with Martha and everyone else and. So that's understandable, um. Okay, uh, is there anything else before we close? All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Do we have a second, Pete?
Absolutely.
All right, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes, sir.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
I vote yes as well. Steve, I assume you're in. You concur?
Yes, I do.
Very good. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Congratulations on last night, everyone who participated. It was wonderful. And.
Thanks.
See you soon.